To order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Okay, um, we have one, uh, remote member tonight, so we'll just do a, a quick roll call. Uh, make sure everybody's equipment's working. Uh, Ms. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Here.
Mr. Duffinay?
Here.
Jefferson is here. Mr. Roy, often?
Here.
Awesome. Um, kicking off the announcements, uh, Craft and Rec will host their fall festival on Sunday, October 20th from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Common with pumpkin painting, a scarecrow building competition, music, food trucks, inflatables, activities, fun with local businesses and more. The municipal center's friendly trick or treating will begin at 3:00 PM on Wednesday, October 30. All are welcome and costumes are encouraged. Start at the front door tent for a bag and a map. The Veterans Advisory Committee is hosting a salute to veterans comedy night, excuse me, on November 7th at 6:00 PM at the Delisle Goulet Post 60 Worcester Street. All are welcome. The Craft and Land Trust's annual dinner meeting will be held at Highfields Country Club on Friday, November 5th at 5:30 PM. Molly Cardoza of the Black Zone River Valley National Heritage Corridor will be the guest speaker this year. Tickets can be purchased at www.graftandlandtrust.org. Okay, uh, no public hearings tonight, so we can move right into appointments, starting with the accessibility advisory commission. We have one applicant, Aaron Phil.
Mr. Chairman? Is Aaron here?
I don't see him on Zoom or in person.
Nope.
Based on, um, his submission and interest, I'll make a, a motion to appoint Aaron Phil to the accessibility advisory commission.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Aye.
Jefferson, aye. Mr. Uh, thank you. Uh, motion passes five zero. Uh, next up, we have the facilities assessment committee with Christopher Mead, who is sitting front row. If you wanna come up and, uh, introduce yourself to the town, uh, give us a quick little synopsis of why you wanna do this.
Sure. Christopher Mead, uh, 230 Brigham Hill Road. Um, uh, I've obviously, I've grown up in town all my entire life. Um, I've joined a couple of boards here and there, committees. Uh, this is a committee that I, I live in commercial construction world. I have my entire life. Uh, currently run a commercial construction company, uh, where I provide assessments to my clients all the time on their buildings and conditions of their buildings. Um, I figured that there was a, a need for, for a seat or, or need for an opening, so, uh, I put my name in.
Appreciate that. Uh, thank you. And again, I'd love to see how this committee's filling out. Uh, anybody on the board have any questions or comments for Mr. Mead?
I wanna be funny, but let's just move on.
Okay.
No questions?
Yeah, barring none, we can take a motion.
I'll make a motion. I move the board vote to appoint Christopher, Christopher Mead to the facilities assessment committee.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Ms. Foley?
Aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Offenay, aye.
Jefferson, aye. Mr. Uh?
Offtonay.
Often, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck control, most guys.
Thanks.
There it is.
Okay, uh, we have one election worker to appoint. We don't usually require them to be in person, so, uh, I think we can go right to motion on that.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I, I move the board vote to appoint Nicole Powers as an election worker.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, roll call. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Duffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Offtonay.
Yes, alright. Motion passes five zero. Uh, moving on to appointments from the town administrator, we have one for the Recreation Commission, Jesse Remillard.
Yep, I don't believe Ms. Remillard will be here this evening, but we've met her on a number of occasions, so she and I had a brief conversation, uh, a couple weeks back, um, and she seems like a great fit.
Agreed. Um, any other discussion from the board? Barring none, we can take a motion.
Motion to appoint Jesse Remillard to the Recreation Commission.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Roll call. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Duffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye?
Offtonay.
Thank you. Uh, motion passes five zero. Uh, next item, new business, one day beer and wine license and a one day outdoor music license, uh, for the community harvest project at 37 Wheeler Road. Uh, we have...
Andy Wolikowski.
Thank you. Would you, excuse me, would you care to tell us a, a little bit about?
Sure, um, it's our end of the harvest celebration and fundraiser, and we start with a 5K in the morning. If there are any runners amongst you who wanna join us, um, we have music and wagon rides and pumpkin throwing and apple throwing things happening in the fields. Um, we have lots of food, arts and crafts for the kids, and beer and wine, beer mostly, actually just beer. We do not have wine. And that's our day. It's a fun day. What else can I tell you?
That sounds like a great time to me. Anybody else have any additional questions?
The hours of the event? I don't know if you said that already, but...
Uh, they're mostly 11 to 3. The 5K goes off at 10:00 in the morning, and the event is 11 to 3.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, if everybody's good, we can take a motion.
Okay, I move the board vote to approve a one day beer and wine license for the community harvest project on Sunday, November 3rd, 2024.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? None, uh, roll call vote. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Duffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye?
Offtonay.
Motion passes. Uh, do another one for the, uh, music?
Yeah, just a quick question on the music. Is it, did you say there's a band or just like, uh, like an iPod with speakers and stuff?
So, we have a radio station coming for the 5K. They do the warm-up, uh, the music during the 5K, and then we have a three-piece band that will start at about noon and play till 3.
Oh, wow. Okay, uh, I move the board vote to approve a one day outdoor music license for the community harvest project on Sunday, November 3rd, 2024.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffinay?
Duffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye?
Offtonay.
Thank you. Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can't wait.
Me either. Thank you.
I, uh, I was up there today, and, uh, I walked by, they have their trebuchet, uh, set up now. If anybody hasn't seen a pumpkin thrown by a trebuchet, go to this event, it's amazing. They, it goes like 200 yards.
Just launch them across the field.
It is amazing.
Is there a catching contest?
Okay, uh, next item on the agenda, we have two, um, license applications for, uh, the Coming School of Veterinary Medicine, one for an all-day, uh, one for an all-alcohol license, excuse me, and one for a music license. Uh, and I believe we have Ms. Scott here for that.
We do. Hello. Um, so they, we have actually a couple. Um, I'm not sure which ones are on the agenda for tonight and next week, but, um, for the music festival and the one day beer and wine, that is for, uh, 10/27 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. It's our student group SAFMA, um, is hosting their annual 5K, the Scaredy Cat 5K. Um, all of the community is welcome, and we are going to have a small, like, health fair and a DJ, so that would be the music portion of it, and then, um, a small beer tent.
Okay. So you actually have three in there?
Yeah.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Yep, I have three.
So you have, uh, 10/27, you, that's the, that, uh...
That's the K9 5K that we just, yep, that I just, um, talked about. Then I have 11-1.
11-1, and then 12-6, or in the...
Yep.
Yep. You say December 6th? Yes.
Yes, 12-6.
Um, just confirming. So 11-1, um, the Dewali Celebration Dinner is a one day all alcohol?
Yes, yep.
12-6 is, uh, the cultural market social, one day all alcohol.
Yep.
And you mentioned a beer tent with the 10/27, um, but we only have the music application for that date?
Uh, it's on the same application. They're both checked.
You're correct. My mistake.
No, that's okay.
One's a, yeah, one's a handwritten next to the figure, and the other one's a title, so it's smaller.
Perfect, okay.
So it should all be there.
Okay, everything else looked like it was in order. Uh, anybody have any questions? Okay, hearing none. Um...
I'll take a stab at it.
Yeah.
I think I can do it.
Should we... I feel like we should include dates in the motions.
Yep, I'm ready to go.
Okay, perfect.
I like to give it a shot, Mr. Chair. So, in that, in that context, esteemed Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the board to approve of one day alcohol licenses for the Coming School of Veterinary Medicine at Tufts University on October 27th, November 1st, and December 6th, and in addition, I'd like to motion, make a motion for a one day music license for, I believe it'd be October 27th.
Yes, yep, perfect.
Sounds good to me.
Second.
Alright, motion made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Thank you.
Duffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye?
Offtonay.
Perfect. Uh, congratulations. Enjoy your...
Thank you guys very much, and again, community is welcome to the Scaredy Cat, uh, 5K on the 27th. Come and run.
Awesome. Lots of running going on.
Also beer drinking too, so.
Yeah, you're a fan of both of those, right? Uh, I know, I know I've seen you in the 5Ks before. Okay, um, next up, we have consider vote to transfer lot 52 at High Point Drive to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, do you wanna kick this off?
I can give a high overview, and then we can drill down as necessary. Um, so this stems from a, uh, settlement agreement that the town had reached, um, with the developer at High Point. Um, the settlement agreement is for three lots and $100,000 to go towards the, um, creation of affordable housing. Um, originally, we had thought that we were gonna, uh, include lots 74 and 48 to give to the Affordable Housing Trust or transfer to the Affordable Housing Trust. Um, and lot 52, we were going to hold, um, for the town, um, mainly because there was some drainage infrastructure downhill, and, um, we thought that we may need that access. Um, however, um, after some discussion and review, it appears that, um, you know, lot 48 is probably gonna be harder to develop, um, and that's one of the ones that was originally gonna be conveyed to the Affordable Housing Trust, as I, I think they all would be. Um, but lot 52 looks a lot buildable, a lot more buildable, excuse me, um, and we did not run into the drainage kinda concerns that, uh, we foresaw, uh, the changes that they made, um, to that open space in the middle, that 1.37 acres, um, doesn't really affect, um, that lot 52 in, in the way that we had, like I said, initially envisioned, so, um, the request is to in, now include lot 52 over to the Affordable Housing Trust, um, for development as affordable housing.
Okay. Um, does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I do. What about 74 and...
So 74 would re- remain, um, 74 is, is, in my, I'm not a builder, but it's relatively flat. Uh, the only issue on it, there was a drainage swale that they were, were, were using, but I think that's rectifiable. Um, so I think that 74 and 52 wind up being the lots that are probably the most easily buildable. Uh, 74, or, um, excuse me, geez, 48 is on quite a grade, so it, you know, e- everything's buildable with the, with the right, you know, determination, so, um, you know, that's a, that's a possibility down the road, but I, I don't think it's easy. It's not an easy one to go out and...
It's a tough area.
I do. Yeah, well, yeah, the whole area is pretty hilly, but I also think that, you know, when you look at the RFP process and putting these things out, you, you may be able to, you know, entice somebody to take a bigger or a, a harder look at lot 48 if you've got the other two that are easier to build. It's just a possibility.
One question. What, what is, um, in the backside at 248? I see 280 acres. I don't know if that is right, but is it a butt, like, a huge open space area?
Uh, let me pull it up. I'm not remembering top of mind.
We, we wanna, I was waiting to see, uh, when we needed to phase them in, but we wanna bring Mr. McCusker up to help with some of these questions now?
Sure, okay.
Why not?
Yeah, that's a drainage, um, for the whole complex. There's a big drainage pond back there. It's not 280 acres, by the way.
Okay, so it's part of...
No, it's... It's part of the drainage infrastructure.
It's part of the project?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's owned by Hingerani or whatever. It's part of, it was, okay, alright, so it's not an abutting problem?
It's not a lot.
Alright, so it's not a big parcel?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's a good-sized chunk of land, but it's way down in a hole. It's probably very wet.
Yeah.
Um, but, uh, I'm pretty sure that's, that's what that lot is. Yeah, or it's part, or it's part of the open space in general, and...
You're, you're correct. It's, it's wetland down there.
Yeah. Um, so I, I think the important thing is, is, a- as Evan said, that the original intent was 52 would be used for, yeah, 52 would be used for drainage, and the hope was that lot 76, which is in the center, we were gonna be able to help their drainage issues by having the builder put a swale down essentially the, I guess that might be the south side of their property, that would lead into 52. Lot 76 did not want the builder going on their property, so be it. So that's what we ended up not really using, uh, 52 in the way it wasn't, the way it was envisioned at the time of the mediation settlement.
Yeah, I, I, thank you. I've forgotten that point, yeah.
And then, as, as far as 48 goes, so there's houses, I'm pretty sure there's houses on both sides. I don't know why that picture doesn't. Um, and it's all the same grade. It's really steep, but they have built houses there and sold them, so it can be done. And, and I think the thinking is, you know, there's two affordable lot, two of these lots have to be affordable, one will be market rate, and I think the feeling is, if, if the Affordable Housing Trust can bundle them all up together and be able to get, you know, a builder in there that can build a, a market rate unit on 48, and then affordable's on the other two, might be able to patch them up together and get it done. That was my thinking when I proposed it. And any other I'll just offer is, is I noticed in the packet that it's motion to transfer or something like that. Just to be clear, the town doesn't own those lots yet. In the, the mediation agreement, which has been signed off, basically says two lots to the Affordable Housing Trust or ZBA designate, lot 52 to the town or ZBA designate. So in my mind, I, I thought we could just do it. And then, um, Dan Hill asked, is the select board gonna be okay with this? Now, I had asked Evan, and he seemed to be fine with it, and so I think at this point, we, we just wanna make sure that the select board's okay with doing that, and I think the ZBA can just do it. That's my read on, on the settlement agreement.
So rather than, um, if we get to that point, motioning to transfer it over, it'd be more motioning for the ZBA to take action?
That's my interpretation. I, I'm sorry, I printed out the settlement agreement, and I left it on the counter at home. Um, I don't know if you, either of you guys have it handy, but that's my interpretation of what that says, is, you know, identified but, or ZBA designate, or some words to that effect is, is what it says. So that, that's my interpretation, not absolutely certain.
Evan, does this have to, I guess, two questions. Is there any liability for the town for us taking this land, and two, does this have to happen at town meeting? Cause I know the previous settlement that we got years ago, that had to be, and it was, it was a dollar amount. It wasn't land, but it was, it was something of value, right? So, um, does this have to go to town meeting?
I think it would go to town meeting when you were gonna issue the, when you've issued the RFP, and now you're going to, um, thank you, dispose of...
Sell property.
Yeah, yeah.
But not taking?
I don't believe we need it, uh, for taking that. Wasn't what we discussed at the settlement agreement with the attorneys. Um, I can always double-check that before we...
Yeah, I mean, the...
But it, in, generally, it's been upon us releasing the property, so...
Yeah, I, I, I don't know for sure, but I mean, if Dan Hill's been involved, the trust attorney's been involved, I mean, I think all the deeds are ready to be transferred. You know, the, they all seem to be okay with it, but I, I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
Did we do any due diligence on the land? Not that there's anything wrong with the lots, other than maybe some topography, but is there any, anything else that we need to do?
Not really. There's, there shouldn't, I mean, we didn't do any, like, soil testing. There's no 2028, but it was woods before that, and...
Yeah.
So it seems pretty low risk, and I don't know that we wanna throw, throw money at that.
Right.
Um, but otherwise, it, like I said, it's pretty, they're pretty cut and dry. They were supposed to be developed. I mean, that's, that's the underlying reason that we're having this conversation here. Um, so, that, that was always the intent there.
Question?
Yeah, Mr. Alamo?
Thank you. Why were they not developed?
Ah, I was waiting for that question. Um, and it, the, uh, previous building inspector admitted and acknowledged in public hearing, uh, public meeting, that they made a mistake in the building department office and allowed the developer to get too far ahead on the market rate units. So the way these 40Bs are supposed to be developed is, you need to, um, get a CO for one affordable unit for every three market rates, right? And they should go in lockstep, so you never get into that circumstance where suddenly now we have two affordables in one market rate. And it was acknowledged that the building department made a mistake and allowed the builder to get to a point where we had two affordables in one market rate, and at that point, it's not worth it to the builder to finish them. It's just, you know, he's, he's losing money on each of the affordables, so now he's gonna lose money on those two, and the money he makes on the market doesn't make up for it, so...
Yeah.
He walked away.
So he walked. Yeah. Another question. So the, these lots will be, um, they will comply with the, um, with the, the current development, with the, with the special permit?
Comprehensive permit.
Right, so they'll be single-family homes, I guess, is what I'm saying. The, the Affordable Housing Trust will find a developer and they'll build single-family homes, which was the, the original permit that was granted?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the permit still applies to those, to those lots.
Yeah.
So, yes.
Okay.
Ms. Foley?
Hi, thank you. Um, that helps, uh, Phil. You answered some of my questions, cause part of it, for me, was just wondering, like, who requested this transfer, and, you know, we didn't see the settlement agreement, so I think that that was part of what, why I asked, um, to have this on the agenda, just to kinda clarify, so thank you for that. I guess my only other question after hearing what you've said is, um, like, does it matter? It's not like, does it, are the lots, um, earmarked for market versus not?
They, they are, but, um, you know, my expectation is whoever ends up with these lots will come to the ZBA with a request to change around the, which ones are affordable and which ones are market rate, and my expectation is the ZBA would do that as a minor, uh, change to the permit, just vote to, to, you know, approve such a, a change, so, um, but right now, 52 is the market rate, 48 and 74 are the affordables, but my, my expectation is if somebody came to us, came to the ZBA and asked to have that changed, that they would change it.
Okay, thank you. And how many were, are, how many affordable units are in that project currently?
76 divided by four? Uh, it's 76, yes, what, 76 divided by four, so whatever that is.
That's okay.
Something like that.
And then the $100,000, that's coming from the developer?
Yes.
As part of the settlement that you, okay?
To help pay to generate the affordable houses.
And has the builder released, was there money held initially? Is that, has that money been released?
No, no, no. That's why he's willing to give us $100,000, so he can get the other $300,000 that, we're, we're holding 400 and change.
Right.
He's, he's giving, uh, as part of the settlement, he's giving 100, and, and we'll release the other 300.
Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
I, I just wanna go back to what Mr. Duffinay asked, and, and just to be really clear, cause I don't wanna mislead anybody. There's nothing stopping any developer who owns those land, that land, to come to the ZBA and ask for a change to put something besides a single-family home. Right? So it's, it's a comprehensive permit. Comprehensive permits can be modified by the ZBA, so right now, they would be single-family homes, and per the regulations from EH, whatever it is nowadays, they have to be similar to what's there, you know, all of that still applies. But, um, you know, there was, uh, at one point in time, discussion to, you know, would it be easier to get some two families put in there and that sort of thing?
Yeah.
There's nothing stopping somebody from coming to the ZBA and asking for that change.
Okay, thank you. But it wouldn't be like a four-story apartment building?
Somebody could come and ask for that, yeah. They could come and ask for a 100-story apartment building, right? So they can ask whatever they want. Now, whether they get it, that's up to the zoning board of appeals, to modify the permit in that way.
It seems like a tough place to put...
I agree. I agree. I think it would be. And it would look extremely out of place. I mean, there's, there's a lot, you know, but, you know.
Anybody else? Ms. Foley?
Thank you. Um, so lastly, essentially, this is under the purview of the ZBA anyway?
That's my interpretation.
It's the position of these, um, lots.
It's, it's a settlement. It's, it's really, right? So, so the ZBA denied his request to close the project. That was appealed to Housing Appeals Committee. It went to mediation. Um, a bunch of us, Evan included, former members of the select board, went to the mediation session, spent a day here going through it, and the settlement that we came up with is what I referred to, and that included to transfer the lots and $100,000. But that's all part of the ZBA process of getting to the point of closing out the project.
And you said there was a former select board member that was part of the hearing or the...
Yeah, Ms. Roy was there.
Okay.
Was anyone else there, Evan? You know, Evan was there.
Bill Yeoman's.
Oh, yeah, Mr. Yeoman's. Really? Three of us were there?
It was Colleen, you, Mr. Yeoman's, me.
Okay.
Owen Williams was there.
Okay, alright. So, yeah.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Take a motion?
Sure.
Um, I'd like to move that the, uh, board consider a vote to affirm the transfer of lot 52 at High Point Drive, uh, to the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second. Okay, motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none?
Just, just that we're, we're in the clear to, to, to do this, like, I mean, we have the authority to...
Yeah, I mean, once the settlement agreement ena- is enacted, or because it's enacted, I, this is it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's already actually been signed.
Okay.
Right, so, I, I think we're just looking for...
They already did this in '23.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm just looking for the okay from the, that you guys are great. I mean, we don't wanna do anything that, you know, I'll disagree with. Yeah, yeah. So I just looking for the okay from the, that you guys are great. I mean, we don't wanna do anything that y'all disagree with.
Okay. Ms. Foley?
It's I'm ready to vote, but I just wondered, can the settlement agreement be available, be made available to us?
It can, yes, now. I don't think.
Absolutely.
At the time, we couldn't send it out, cause it can't be a public record, but as soon as it's, we'll just double check that with.
Um.
Okay.
You already, you already shared.
I'm pretty sure it's already public.
Okay. We can double check that.
Yeah.
Okay, and if so, that if we could uh have that sent along.
No, you actually already have it.
Okay.
Sent to you on ten seven twenty twenty four.
Okay.
And I'd have to go back and look in twenty three if it was.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's been shared and discussed in open meeting by the ZBA and I think once it was signed, it became.
Right, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none? Uh Ms. Foley?
Uh Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Dophany?
Dophany, aye.
Jefferson, aye. Mr. Oftler?
Oftler, aye.
Uh motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, um thank you for coming in, Mr. McCusker and you, you know, help help guide us through this in the past and appreciate you coming back. Um I'm going to turn the chair back over to Ms. Foley for uh preparing questions for seventeen twenty seven Upton Street.
Okay, so um I am participating remotely, and so therefore I asked Andy to take over this evening, as I think it's just a lot more efficient when the chair is in the room. Uh but I was asked to take uh to take over for this portion. Just pulling up my agenda again. So we're talking about seventeen twenty seven Upton Street um and formulating or discussing questions and or concerns that we can present to um John Grant, the developer in this case. And with the hope that he or representative might come in to speak to us. Um this was on, this plate was placed on the agenda per a um request from one of our board members. And when I was elected chair, I committed to making sure that all agenda items that were requested by board members would be placed on the agenda. Um so that is what I have done, and that's what I will continue to do. Um just if there's any question as to why this is on the agenda. So um I think what I how I'd like to do this to start uh is kinda go down the line and either folks can concisely and respectfully, you know, discuss or or ask questions about said project. Any questions or concerns or or what have you that we might compile for Mr. Grant in the future? Um so with that being said, I would, not to put you on the spot, Matt, but I'll just kinda go down the row. Matt, I can start with you.
Um so Emery, I uh shared your concerns that you expressed last time with the land disposition and um the question about, you know, the legal entities and whatnot. Um but I don't have any further questions.
Okay, and Andy?
Uh I'm in the same boat. I I um I agreed with the three previous question, follow up questions that we sent. Um it seems like we've gotten a response on two out of the three. Um I'm just waiting on that final one, but nothing, nothing additional to add.
Frozen in time.
Okay, Craig?
Yeah, so my my uh I guess my general questions are are about the RFP that was submitted versus the application for special permit that was filed with the planning board. So I wanna ask some kinda some questions about how, you know, how that happened, how, what do you submitted and and transition to what was, you know, submitted to the to the planning board. Um and then some general questions, ki- kinda related to like what Bob Carroll had wrote, you know, some of his questions, just have uh John, Mr. Grant, explain kind of how his businesses um are formed and and some of the questions revolving around the status of those businesses, I guess. So that those are, those are kinda the the general conversation. I would say that, you know, we are in an agreement with him, we're in a business deal with him, so to ask him to come in and to talk about that is, I think, a reasonable request.
So basically, just um kinda just discussing that the RFP and how, you know, the project looks now.
Yeah, I mean, and you know, based on, based on the conversations, some other questions might come up. I mean, I'm, you know, I want him to come in, I wanna talk about the project, talk about what was submitted versus what.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah, so it's like that's, but we'll see where the conversation goes.
Okay, and then um and Mark?
Got me?
You guys hear me?
Yep. Oh, you froze.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, no additional questions for me.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know, you guys are kinda.
Maybe more of a comment, and that would be, I mean, there's obviously obviously some questions. People are curious. You'd love to be able to work collaboratively and cooperatively with your partner. I'd love it if you just came in and maybe the room wasn't so full, and we could just have a nice conversation and go through it. Because I'm as maybe a potentially a bit of an optimist myself, would love to think that we could just have a good conversation and get through some of these points that are fair questions to ask and probably easy questions to answer.
Yep. Okay, um and then for me, I know Evan is working on the land disposition agreement. That would be something separate from John, obviously, Mr. Grant, but uh well, separate but not really. Um and then just for me still, just the questions relative to, you know, how this business um to clarify his whole business dealings and all the different entities and different names that have been signed, but that's something that we've brought up before. Um and so I don't feel that I've gotten an answer on that. Uh the one thing that has been answered uh by Evan is and and in part by the Affordable Housing Trust uh for me, things relative to the proof of insurance and um you know, basically just uh onboarding documents. So that part has been answered. Um okay, any other? Can you guys hear me?
Hmm, yes.
Okay. Uh anything? Are there really nothing, no new um questions or concerns, right? Just uh other than perhaps he can speak to us directly about, you know, the changes in the project and and hash through that a little bit more.
I'm sure.
Yep.
Um I'm I'm with everybody on getting clarification on the LLCs. Uh I think we've, you know, that's the one thing we've all been, often in agreement on. Um I feel like the legal opinion we have uh does a pretty good job of outlining uh where and when the changes to these plans happened. Um I don't, I don't know that it's something we need to have an extended conversation about. Um and beyond that, it seems like th- those are really the two issues, is how we get from A to B and the LLC questions between everybody, everything that's being discussed here. Um I'm also not sure, I feel like it's appropriate for uh Mr. Grant to to come in here at this point. Um I know municipal situations cha- uh you know, challenge the norm and and add their own wrinkles. Um but once typically a purchase and sale uh, you know, agreement is signed and been entered to um in most scenarios, a- any communication is done between an intermediary, whether that's a realtor um or their councils. It just, to me, feels like this conversation, if that's the only remaining question we have, has has already been asked. Uh and we are waiting for an answer from council. Um and that if there are any additional questions that we can come up with tonight, they'd be best submitted through our council to GSX's council.
I think that, you know, given that we, this is, it's a different scenario. Um you know, we own this land, right? This isn't a typical interchange that we've done in the past. Um or interaction, I should say. I'm not even sure if that's the right word, but anyways, um so, given that we own the property, technically, you know, have some control over. It it should be not an issue, you know, to to speak to us about it. You're right, there's a purchase and sale. Can you hear me still?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm getting this, my internet is unstable, but anyways, um there's a purchase and sale and, you know, I don't wanna pull out of a a signed document or signed um, you know, P and S with that we've gone into. This is certainly, but I think it's, it's not out of the question that we can have some questions for this developer. Um and the fact that there was so much public questioning, uh and that's not really died down in in my estimation. I think, you know, through the planning board process, uh people weren't necessarily um encouraged to, you know, dive a little deeper into some of these things, right? Because that was, it was outside of the the lane or the purview of the planning board. Um so, you know, I would hope that this developer, and particularly because I believe he has an interest in another develop or another site in our town, um would be willing to come in and and I don't see that it it needs to be, it's it's not like an adversarial um a thing. I own a business and if I come up with a a business plan or I'm looking to enter into a contract, I would, I'll meet with whoever it is all day long um to answer questions and to make sure that the entity that I'm going into business with feels one thousand percent comfortable with, you know, who I am, what my business is and and how I plan to um, you know, move forward. Again, this could be also someone that is involved in running this complex after development. Um so I think that it would be prudent to have a relationship, as Mark indicated, um where, you know, there might be other things that come up, right? Uh down the lo- down the road. So I am still hopeful that other folks in the board would agree um to to request that he comes in. I can formulate, you know, some of these things. It's really not a long list. Um um and if I were there when he comes, I would assure him that I will chair that meeting as I do others and not let um, you know, things go astray. Anyone else have anything?
Madam Chair?
Yes, I can't see. Is it Matt?
Yep. Um I feel like uh we have one question, specific question, whi- which is a concern about the the uh legal entity that we're dealing with. Um and I agree with Mr. Jefferson. Um we should just refer that to council and have them uh, the town administrator get back to us on that particular issue. The only other thing that I heard was um an ask for some general uh questions about things, and we'll see where it goes. Um and that just doesn't make sense to me. We're we're well past general questions at this point. I think the the developer has been through the whole planning hearing process and um, you know, we had a meeting with council uh at which all of the questions were asked and now have been answered. And we've had a follow up meeting with council to ask more questions and get more answers. Um I think we have all the information we need. I I don't it doesn't feel to me like um the intention is to actually uh try to maintain a good relationship with this developer. This is just isn't what it feels like to me. Um and I would be concerned about bringing the developer in at this stage. Um I just I'd be worried about that. And I think if the board's intent is to move forward with a collaborative relationship, maybe a little bit of space and time might be appropriate, instead of um trying to bring them in in the middle of um what we're going through right now. Um cause we already have all the information that we need. I just, I don't see the benefit in bringing the developer in, because we already have the the questions answered. So I don't I haven't heard any question that was expressed tonight that hasn't already been addressed. I just, I just don't, I don't understand why we would do that.
Madam Chair?
Yep, Mr. Dophany.
I guess I don't understand why we would not. So, you know, in order to have a relationship, you have to communicate. And I know I've only been on the board for I don't know, three or four months. Um but by understanding, he hasn't been before this board for a year and a half. And it's hard to have a relationship with somebody that you don't communicate with. So this is an important project to the town. Um I'm sure it's an important project to Mr. Grant. Um so to have him come in and have a conversation about it, you know, um is important. You know, I've been in business for forty years, and if I was involved with a project like this on either side of the fence, I certainly would have a relationship with the board, the responsible party that's selling me the property. So I don't know what the fears, I've never, you know, I've been doing this a long time too. I've never had to come up with a list of questions for somebody coming in either to have a general discussion about a project that is gonna have significant impact on the town. Um so I don't, you know, I I don't get it. I don't get why, you know, he he hasn't come in yet. He seems to go to the Affordable Housing Trust when he has to go there um and hand in invoices and and, you know, and get funds. So he can't come in and have a conversation with the with the board that's in the in the agreement for the project with him. So I think it's good that he comes in, we'll have a conversation. I haven't really got to meet him yet. Um so I'm not comfortable with that, that we're in a, we're at a an important agreement which, like I said, is gonna have a big impact on the town, and I haven't even met the man yet. So um if you wanna put it on me that I'm asking for it, I'm asking for it, cause I I wanna have him come in and talk about the project with us. I think it's a reasonable request and something that he should have been doing over the last eighteen months.
And I'll just add to that, um he's not come into the board since I've been on the board, so it's two and a half years, I guess. Mr. Spiny, come in and speak to us about the project as it was going along.
Yeah, well, the agreement isn't with Mr. Spiny. The agreement was with.
I understand. And just, yeah. I'm just saying that, yeah, I I don't, he's never come into us, so um.
Yeah, Madam Chair?
Mr. Almo?
So just that, for my purposes, I think the motion is to approve questions and send them to the developer. And if we wanna add into that question, hey, would you mind visiting us? That'd be great. I don't think that we're, as much as I, I think it should be simple to have a a a simple conversation with our business partner, as I mentioned earlier. And I would think that he or she or they would wanna come in and visit with us, particularly in light of the circumstances. But I'm with, I'm 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 also, I I would recognize also that that could get a little bit choppy, and we definitely don't want that. I mean, we do have a signed purchase and sale agreement. We don't need to make a a huge fight out of it, but I I guess I see things as just a conversation, but maybe it's, maybe it's more complicated than that. Maybe that's beyond my pay grade. But I don't see why a conversation wouldn't be that complicated. But that said, the motion is not to have him come in. The motion is to approve the questions to send to him.
Well, and and it's really, we're doing this because um he didn't come in. Uh we had already extended invitation to him and I I won't be clear on all the dates, because I think there's been a couple of times where he was away and then he just um ended up just deciding that he did not want to come in to the subsequent meeting. And then he was also invited this evening and ha- ended up having um a an unexpected vacation. So so we don't really, you know, need a motion for that, I guess. I can can work through Evan just to I don't even know that if we need a motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, so Madam Chair, I in the the, as council had suggested, um I had sent, I've sent the fact based letter. Um and so I can um forward that out. It's the same, it's the same information that's in the the opinion we got, so it's nothing different. Um but to clarify those um LLC questions that the board has. Um so I think that part's already known and we can just use that um for that, that component of of what the questions are.
Sorry, so you said that.
I, yeah, I'll.
Yep.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll, um, oh, I I know it's hard to, it's hard to hear. Um, so I already did the LLC component to those questions. I already have that pre-written is what I'm saying. So don't, I was just trying to stop you from spending any time formulating that. That's, we already have that block. So, um, you and I can work on the rest of it together.
Okay. So, sorry, we don't have it. Like, you have it? We, the board, send it in for you, or no?
It's the same information that was in the 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 opinion. I can, uh, well, we can chat tomorrow and I can give you a background, just because it keeps breaking up a little bit.
Yeah. Madam Chair.
Yeah.
I I'll just say this, you know, when when he was going through the planning board process, when the project was, you know, Mr. Grant showed up, right, for some of those meetings live and some of them virtual. Um, but, you know, s- some questions or some conversations can't be answered through, when it comes to business deals, through attorneys and through asking questions and i- if people do business with people, and again, this is a big project, and the board should want him to come in. The board should want to have dialogue. The board should want, our board should want to do that. And so on, you know, on the flip side, Mr. Grant should want to come in, right? He should, if if, um, you know, he should be willing to come in and answer some questions and have a have a discussion about this. This is a big deal. And if if he's not, or this board is not, then there's something going on, other than having a transparent, open dialogue with a developer that's coming to Grafton. So if if there's people that have ulterior motives when it comes to that, I don't get it. He should come in. We should talk about it. He hasn't been in front of the board in a year and a half. You know, it's a big deal. So I hope I hope he decides to come in. Um, like I said, because he's going in front of other boards, why wouldn't he come in front of the board that he has to deal with? So, um, I would like to have him come in and meet him and talk about the project.
Madam Chair.
Okay, so if. Yeah, same. Yep.
This is, uh, it's just difficult. Um, I I'd love for John to come in. But I think this board has to ask itself why he's reluctant to come in to talk to us when he's more than willing to go to the planning board meeting and the Affordable Housing Trust. If I read all those questions and the answers, um, from from our council, I would, I would wonder, what is the, what is the motive of this board? What what are we after here? Are we after a good relationship? Is is that what we're after? Mark, I think that's what you said, right? We're after a collaborative relationship?
Yes, I always think.
You want that, Craig, right? That's that's what we want, right? We want a collaborative relationship. This just doesn't feel like that to me.
Well, I don't understand why that is, but he should come in.
That's what I don't understand.
Madam Chair.
I and, um, and it's hard to try to rip that out, um, without talking to the person that we're talking about. Yep, Andy.
Thanks. Um, a a few clarifications, I think. Um, the 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 GSX has a grant agreement with the Affordable Housing Trust, um, I think, which is probably why, uh, he spends as much time, I can't even say he spends as much time. Uh, having served on the, as our representative to the trust, and I'm sure Mr. Hoffman can attend, uh, can attest, um, you know, there were, there were times where, um, the trust had to wait a couple of months because of Mr. Grant's schedule. It's, you know, it's, um, it's not like he was so much doing for one without doing for the other. Um, but Mr. Spiny came in here as representative, uh, of the trust, as the chair who had who had had those discussions. It was not, um, an arbitrary decision. Uh, I think it's also important to point out that Mr. Grant declined our our invitation, uh, on the advice of his counsel. Uh, it's not first for for other purposes. I think it's unfair and unwise to, um, in- infer that uh, there were other potentially nefarious, um, you know, dealings, uh, that that forced this. Um, and again, to, you know, for for a group that wants to foster a collaborative relationship to infer to to residents that, um, this deal isn't on the up and up, or somebody might have ulterior motives or something like that. Um, simply because we're not necessarily getting the discussion that we want, i- it it's just, I don't think it's a good approach, and I and I think it starts to push push towards defamation, honestly. Um, I don't know how many, how many implications we can make against this company is kind of a a boogeyman. Um, and and trust that they're just going to continue to be okay with it.
I have no idea what that means.
I think that's okay. So I think therein lays the, you know, the trouble. I think if if we could have a conversation with developer, uh, or via Zoom, what have you, uh, there would be no inference this, um, because the the perception is, you know, why can this person, you know, not not come in to see us to talk about land that, you know, that we own? And I understand we have a a deal Affordable Housing Trust has a deal so on and so forth, but this is a project that it's a big project for our town. There are a lot of people, you, Andy. You're, but it stopped for me still, just so you know. Um, can you hear me?
No, we we didn't catch most of that.
Ah, I don't know how to make this better. So anyways, I just was simply saying that, um, this is a big project, big effect on our town. A lot of people are still, uh, you know, they reach out, a lot of people reach out to me still. So if I could say, yeah, we met with this gentleman, here's what's going on. Um, I I just think it would be, it would be a good, a good look. So I apologize that if you guys are not hearing everything I'm saying. Um, anything else from the board? And if not, I think what I will do is, as Evan said, um, you know, speak with Evan and we can see if there really are any additional questions based on this. Are you guys hearing me?
Yes, we are.
Um, I just saw a look and, uh, and I think that there are three of us that would like to have this gentleman come in and we'll we'll try again.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I will turn this back over to Andy. And again, I apologize. Um, Andy, do you have something else?
Uh, we we have a hand in the audience. I don't know if you want to, uh, entertain public comment at this time.
Um, I think I will would wait. Again, I'm not there.
So, um, I guess just summarizing, uh, where where do we stand with this? Because I have, I have two questions written down, uh, that that remain outstanding. And I just want to make sure that that is uh, in in line with what the rest of the board has, I guess. We, how did we get from one set of plans to the other and LLC? Is that, is that it? Is that all we're discussing?
Yeah, and I just have to, I guess if there is information relative to all the LLCs, um, I'd be happy to to see that. Okay.
You know, Madam Chair, just one more thing. I mean, we could, you know, he has his permit now, right? So I mean, we could, we could certainly kind of get an update on the project, too, like what what is, you know, kind of time schedule and, um, you know, what he's, what his thoughts are for for the project, when he would want to get going and, you know, we could have that conversation as well.
Okay. So, um, Evan, I'll ask you, perhaps, do we need a motion of some sort here?
No, I wouldn't think so at this point.
I don't think so either. Okay.
Um, and I did just forward out just that email with the LLC language in it, so everybody could take a look. But as I said, it's the same. It's plagiarized directly from council, so it's not like it's something different.
Okay.
Um, uh, Madam Chair, I I just, I I'd love to hear what all the questions are that continue from the public. I just haven't heard anything new tonight.
Okay, I'll have them send it in correspondence.
All right.
Should we move on?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, um, road acceptance at Faulkner Road. Yep, so, um, this is a, this is kind of a two-parter. The both these agenda items are kind of connected. Um, one being Faulkner Road and the other one being citizens petitions and how that operates. Um, so as we touched upon and then discussed a little bit further, um, you know, the the citizens petition language that Kevin Mulvey had submitted is not actionable because there's no layout plan for the road. So the town can't act on it. Um, it it's partially Article nineteen of our general bylaws is a little bit wonky in how we get to this layout plan. And that's something I think we need to have a broader conversation about. But for now, um, I did meet with Kevin, um, last week. Um, and seeing as though the board, um, voiced its general support for taking these private ways and making them public over time, um, I I think the request that I'll have is to do pretty much the same process we followed with Johncass Terrace, which is, there was a citizens petition. Um, we all l- looked at it and said, yeah, that that makes sense. And so then the select board under our Article nineteen votes to order the DPW director to create a layout. And that sets the ball in motion for us to get the meets and bounds and do all of those things so that we can then, one, make an informed decision because we'll know how much it would cost to do the repairs or the paving. Um, but that would also put us in position to take this as a public way in the spring. So that would be my request of putting this on here so that we can get that ball rolling, um, because it does take a little while.
Um, could I ask a question? So I I think this is great. Um, I would, I would like to see us do Harding Street.
Yes.
Um, so if we need a citizens petition and and, um, I know there's a guy to do it. He's lived there his entire life, um, and he had come to me a while ago, but that street, um, and I'd like Skip to come in and and talk about it because that was, that street was, uh, you know, there was a schoolhouse at the top of that street for the, you know,
Yeah.
for the mill that was built. And, you know, so the buses went up and down that street for for decades. And and, you know, now it's it's not considered a public way. So if we're going to do Faulkner Road, could we do Harding Street, too? It's not a big street, not a long street, but it's in bad shape.
Yes, I know you you'd mention that to me after the act, Ask Me Anything, we had in South Grafton. Um, so I, I do want, um, and I've requested this from uh, DPW to put together a list of what we have left as inventory of private ways so that we can just, you know, have an informed list, but we could also, I I'd be in support of pushing for Harding as well.
Yeah.
Um, like I said, we knocked two off. We've got Johncass and Waterville.
Right.
Um, so I I'd be in favor of doing, um,
Great. Could we put it on the agenda? Maybe if the board's all right, have Skip come in and kind of talk about the road?
I made a note and I'll shoot it over to Emery, but we'll see if we can get that on an upcoming agenda, just to
Yeah.
have the board vote to create a layout plan and then, um, you know, we can get that in motion, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thanks.
Sounds good. Um, for this evening, would the board, uh, consider a vote to have the DPW create a layout?
Sure. So moved. Second. Okay, motion man seconded. Any discussion? Done. Uh, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Doffney?
Doffney, aye.
Jefferson, aye.
Austin, aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
So you can go ahead and reach out to Mr. Canoyer and
I'm going to order him to do it. Or the select board. And that's what it says in the bylaw, shall be ordered.
Tell him to be here early.
Okay, and segueing right into reviewing the citizens petition process.
Yeah, so, you know, we have a citizens petition form that's in the packet. Um, and, you know, this, uh, just I'll use the Kevin's, uh, citizens petition as an example of how the system kind of doesn't work, right? So, um, people come in on, you know, it was due this year on a Friday. They come in on Thursday afternoon and say, I want to do this petition. And a lot of times they're not simple things. They're, they're pretty complicated. I mean, road acceptance is complicated, but also more straightforward than almost any of the other stuff we see. So what what I'm trying to come up with is a better scenario where, um, you know, folks are coming to us, say, ninety days before town meeting. Now, they can petition up right up until, right, there's, there's legal, uh, record or, uh, uh, options to get on the agenda. We're not trying to tamp anybody's participation down. But I was thinking of crafting some language around, say, ninety days and and put in in the our policy that, you know, if you want the town's help in crafting and you want, you know, that you need to come to us ninety days before any of the town meetings that we're holding, um, it's kind of, I don't want to use the word guarantee, but guarantee support and help to get through that. Now, you could maybe come two weeks beforehand, and if it's something within our power to do, we would certainly help you do it. But I just, you know, I I don't know. Um, this is the second time that I've gone through this process and it just doesn't work the way that it is. I mean, people come in, um, you know, Mr., um,
Bruni?
Nope. The gentleman with Old Westboro Road, um, the sidewalk. So I don't know that there's a way that the town would have really been able to help even at ninety days because we don't have a a amount of money to put on the warrant, right? That, so, but we would have been able to have those conversations. Instead, you know, we get it the week ahead and it's got some deficiencies, so we help with that. It's probably still not, it's it's not actionable. It's just a a a opinion piece on there at this point. But there's no way for us to do that, even if we wanted to, because we don't have the time, because they've got to go back out and get more signatures. It's just, it compresses it right at the end. And there's probably going to be times where it's always compressed, but I don't know, I'm just trying to think of a way that we can create a process that gives us more time, because we we do want to assist folks in getting what they're trying to do on the warrant. Um, but it's just often hot hard with the timeframe that we're given. Um, so my part of this, I asked, um, Emery if we could get this on the agenda was to really start the conversation. Doesn't have to be decided tonight that we're going to do this or do that, but just, you know, other people might have thoughts or opinions on how this moves that I I'm not thinking about because I'm doing the job that I do. Um, so I I just, I don't know, I just, I can see it doesn't work. So we need to do something a little bit different.
Yeah.
I think Emery has her hand up on there.
I'll go to Emery first on this one. I still remute. Mute, yeah.
I was killing it with the mute thing tonight, too. Um, can you hear me?
Yes.
So initially, when you mentioned ninety days, Evan, it seemed to me that seemed like a a long time, but in thinking more about it, I actually think it's it's right on. Uh, when I did the two citizen petitions, I went to most most every department, like I went to finance and I came to select board, I, you know, so ninety days actually isn't that long, particularly if someone has to go to other boards potentially, right, over the course of of their petition.
Right.
Um, so I agree with at least that part of it, to to start, is looking at, um, extending the time and not just writing that it's whatever, two weeks before the the warrant, or or when the warrant closes or what have you.
Right. I I also thought in the case of of, uh, like, we'll keep using Faulkner Road as an example, you know, that's one that if we had more time, he, we might not even needed a citizens petition. We could just petition the board to take it up as their issue and put it on a warrant and create the layout plan. So he doesn't necessarily have to go through that whole process because you really only need a citizens petition, and I'm not, this may not be the way to say it, but when the the board or or portions of the town are not going to be receptive to it. So if the board is going So if the board is gonna be friendly to, let's get a layout plan created for Faulkner Road, then why do that whole other process when we can just get all our ducks in a row beforehand, go to town meeting once, and be done? But the, the longer timeframe kinda gives us, it gives us time to figure that out, right? So, that's my thought.
Yeah. No, that's, I was thinking the same thing, if we could take these on as a board and sponsor the warrant articles and speak to it and it would, you know.
You don't need to do all of that other.
We have you to do that.
Exactly, well, that, and, and, you know, so like, like the gentleman for, I'm, I know, Faulkner Road. You know, they, he doesn't know every in and out of every process and what board to do and all that stuff. So, you know, if we can kinda take it and champion it on their behalf, as, as an issue that everybody feels is, is worthy, great. And if it looks like it's not gonna go that way, then by all means, that's what the citizens petitions process is for. So, anyways, just my thoughts and maybe we can, I, I, maybe I can work up some kind of a drafted policy that's you know, conforms with our, our bylaws and our, um, charter, just to make sure we're not overstepping and then bring that back in a little bit. Maybe November sometime. Amberie has her hand up again.
Ms. Foley, second question?
Yeah, sorry, I just wanted to highlight that, um, Evan actually, uh, told me that recently, that, you know, if it was something that I might not need a citizen petition, for example, for something that I'm working on, and that it could just be brought to the board. So I think that's in, important information to get out to folks as well. And hopefully they're, you know, hearing that this evening and then we can bring that up again when this, if this gets on the agenda again. That things, to your point, that might not be met with resistance can just go through the board onto the warrant.
So I had, um, a couple thoughts on this one. I think it was one of the recommendations in the bylaw review, um, that we could consider. Uh, I think it was intended to be a committee like this that would, that would help citizens petitions through. You know, I, I think the intent there was a little more proactive in getting the language to line up with, how things are currently written in, in the charter or in the bylaws. So that there's not, you know, kind of a massive overhaul needed, uh, when we go through and, and unify in the future, but, um. I don't know, um, it's one of those things, right? It's, it, it's reliant upon town volunteers, uh, and, and them being well-versed and, and the people who had discussed the idea of it, uh, I believe are those things. It takes, I think, some of the work off your plate in, in a potentially busy time and, and helps supplement that. I don't know if that's something we wanna discuss. I go back and forth on the ninety day lead time. Because our town meetings are roughly six months apart, and now we're giving people half that time, uh, as opposed to the full time to get everything ready. And I know we'd still accept things, you know, but maybe with the, um, the asterisk that, uh, if it's not properly written, it might not be actionable, we may have to pass over to town meeting, should you not take us up on this service. And I, I do take the point, um, about getting on, you know, if you need to visit multiple committees, getting on their schedule. So many of them only meet once a month. Sixty, sixty days feels a little more reasonable to me if we could, if we, I just, it feels like a lot to say that three months before town meeting, you have to start planning these things. Because I just, I don't think it's a realistic benchmark that citizens are gonna hit.
Right, cool. I, I also think, you know, it, maybe I'm not articulating it well, I mean, in my mind, it's not a has to be, you, you have to do it, but if you want the support, you gotta give us at least this amount of time to guarantee you that support. And otherwise, you know, we support you as, as we're able to. I, I actually, and the board can do, obviously, whatever the board likes, I, I don't like the committee idea. Because then it's, it's political, it's, there's, there's other things that happen at the board level. Where, you know, in, in my role or my office, we're supposed to be apolitical, and we don't, we don't, we don't care if the board will like it or not like it, or we're just gonna help you do it, right? And, and, you know, um. I don't know, that, that's kinda my thought on that, is that, you know, we take, we take some of that out of it. Because there are challenging issues, and I also think that, um, you know, Matt and I had some experience with this, with a previous petitioner and you know, it's, it's, sometimes they're asking you to, uh, they're petitioning against, you know, your own bylaws or position or whatever it is, and we gotta figure out a way to navigate that, I guess, I'm trying to put it. So anyways, I, I, I don't like the committee idea, at least top of mind. But so maybe, maybe we can, maybe I can play around with a policy or some language and see if I can speak to some of the concerns and, you know, doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be so riv- rigid that it, you know, you come in at day eighty-nine and it's like, whoop. Like, that's not what we're looking to do either, but it's just trying to create some mechanism where people see it and say, ah, okay, um, you know, I'm gonna come in and, you know, I'll get some support here. Um, but maybe not the day before it closes, you, you know, that's kinda what we're looking for.
Yeah, I, I kinda had the same feeling that, you know, to have a committee for it. We have staff, professionals, two of them right here that know how to do that stuff. So I mean, and we have town council too, if you guys are too busy, they can write the article, right? I mean, if, if, you know, if you guys know how to do it, so there's certain things that a warrant article has to include. So it probably doesn't take you guys a long time to write, I'm sure it depends on the nature of the article.
Right, right.
Right.
But it, but it'd be great to be able to vet it with council beforehand too. Cause even some of these kinda simp- simple seeming warrants, and we've seen a lot of warrant articles. The state's got some wonky stuff that, you know, well, you didn't put this little clause in here, or you didn't, you know. So it, it's great to have that time to try to get this right. So anyways, maybe, and I know Madam Chair has her hand up again, but maybe, you know, I, I'll leave it at, maybe give me a little bit of time and I will, um, I'll craft something and we'll, we'll see what the board thinks of that. We can have something to work off to tweak, but I didn't want it to go too far away from the Faulkner Road conversation without acknowledging it and pointing out that, you know, we continue to have an issue. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Yep.
Yeah, I was just gonna kinda hop on with Evan, I, I, I'm a little bit disagreed with the committee idea as well, and I don't wanna beat this to death, but, because like the purpose of a citizens petition is actually that it's just a citizen that's bringing this in, you know, not from a committee or anything. And, and, and technically even bringing it without help per se, right? It's just that our TA is, is willing to kinda vet some of these things earlier on, so. And then, um, and then I just wanted to reiterate, you know, Evan said that you could still bring it the two weeks beforehand, just if you brought it ninety days in advance, it might be better, so you still would have the option to bring it whenever you wanted, right?
Yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Jefferson? Yeah, Ms. Roffin.
Yeah, I think, uh, you know, as I think back to what most of the, um, the citizen petitions are, there aren't too many of them that are time constrained or urgent, right? So things like a road acceptance, um, I mean, I'm thinking back to all the citizen petitions that we voted on over the years. And there haven't been too many that really were urgent, that couldn't be done in the following town meeting. So I think some additional time and, um, you know, just setting expectations that, um, you know, if you're gonna require some help, and we would suggest that you do. That, um, you know, that you do give staff some extra time. I think we certainly could set it up so that, um, you know, the expectation is we'll do the best we can, no matter, no matter when it comes in. But, you know, you're, as you said, like, your best shot at actually getting something to be successful. And it may not even be a citizen petition, it may be something that's sponsored by a board or committee.
Right.
Maybe that goes to planning, or maybe it gets sponsored by the select board or whatever. Some of these things are complicated. Some of the thing, you know, the, um, issues that we dealt with, um, I know a couple of town meetings ago had to do with bylaws and the charter and MGL and it would, everything was sorta interwoven with what the desired outcome was from the petitioner. So those types of things. We had very little shot at getting even close to coming to something that was a, like, functional petition that could be actioned. Because of all the research and the complexities and all that other stuff, so. I'm definitely, uh, I hear what you're saying Evan, I think it makes a lot of sense to try to create that expectation, but also, um, um, I'm glad that you're willing to just step in and try to help no matter what. It, it is a big ask to, most people don't think of things until they see, um, that there's a town meeting coming up next month. And then they think to themselves, oh yeah, I had this idea, or, you know, wonder what I should put on. So that's the, the most common experience. But, uh, yeah, um, earlier, definitely better, uh, for sure. So I look forward to seeing what you, uh, what you craft.
Alright, thank you.
Anything else? Alright, thanks Evan. Consider vote to ratify the GPD union contract.
Yep, so as, um, shown in the warrant, um, the police contract is, um, ready for signature. Uh, we were able to, um, strike a deal where the members get a one percent, two percent, two percent, uh, raise as well as us adding, uh, Quinn back in, um, with, uh, the exception that it doesn't include overtime. And, um, we matched the longevity of the other two unions in town, uh, which is good for consistency. We also changed a, a couple of the stipends, uh, around that officers get for doing different specialty work. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions. I do need to point out that there is, when you make your motion, it'll have to be as am- as, as amended. There's one word that needs to be deleted out on page nineteen. And that is, uh, there is a sentence that says, "An officer assigned as field training coordinator." Apparently, field shouldn't be there, uh, it's just training coordinator. It, it apparently means something else to folks in law enforcement. I, I believe I inadvertently wrote the word field in there. Um, cause if you look at the next line, it discusses field training officer, that's the field training officer. The other one is just a training coordinator, no field. So it would be to delete the word field, that would be the only change.
Okay. Any questions? Hearing none, uh, Mr. Alamo, you wanna hit us with a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I move the board vote to approve the Grafton Police Department Union Contract as amended and authorize the town administrator to sign.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Doffinay?
Doffinay, aye.
Jefferson, aye, Mr. Roffin.
Roffin, aye.
Motion passes, five zero. Uh, update on Three Worcester Street?
Yeah, so that's, uh, that's me, so, um, following up on, on, uh, last time we had Frank Rothwell come in and talk about the things that he was going to do to the space, and then I know a lot of you, uh, were able to actually go and tour. Um, so he had give us kinda a list of things he was working on. So, uh, they have installed the new garage doors at the site. I don't know why I said at the site, you know where I'm talking about. The parking spots have been painted, but I, I don't think they're painted the way that they were shown on the, on the grid. So I've got a follow-up with them, I just haven't had time to, to do that yet. All the vines and growth on the exterior of the building have been removed. They have painted all of the black trim on the building. They are, um, gonna hold the white trim, um, work until the spring. They have signs that we discussed that are, uh, ready to be installed early next year. They've got them designed, they went through the design process, now they're gonna go through the rest of it. The exterior doors, uh, will be painted and repaired in the spring. So it looks like about half to two-thirds of what they said they were gonna work on has been, been completed. So I know they've been doing that in between the other work that they have to do, um, at the schools, so. Seems like they're making decent progress.
Yeah. That vine work alone was, uh, extensive.
A lot of vines.
Yeah. Any, um, any questions or comments from the board? Ms. Foley?
Yeah, just on the parking, you know, that there was no net gain the way they drew them, so if we could get on that and
Yep, I agree. Have you been, has anybody, Mr. Chair?
Yep, Mr. Alamo.
Has anybody been over there to check it out? Just on the exterior, I, I did. I don't know if you were addressing that to me or not, but.
Well, I went over there with Andy, I think Matt was there too.
That was me. Right?
Yeah, Evan, he showed up. I know Evan went, yeah, I thought maybe Matt didn't go.
No, no one invited me, I just saw your cars there.
Somebody should be pro.
Always an open invitation though, I don't know why. Yeah, but, um.
Maybe we could go back again, walk around, check it out.
I'm sure Frank would love to.
I'd just be curious, cause he was doing such a great job with everything.
Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. Okay, Mr. Chair, that's all I got.
If everybody's alright with that, we will move on to scheduling the next Ask Me Anything. Our previous one was Craig and I at the end of July, so that would put us due right about now.
I think, uh.
Oh, that'd be interesting doing that. Okay. Yeah, but, uh, Mr. Roffin's up, Ms. Foley?
I'd be happy to do it, I think I might be up as well.
Okay. Uh, any idea if you guys would wanna try it for the end of this month or sometime in November, probably?
It's full circle, I think the first one I did was with you, Matt.
That's right, yeah, went really well.
You wanna try to come up with a date now, is that what you're saying?
I, we don't have to, I didn't know if you wanted to, if you had a rough area you wanna pick, if you wanna shoot for some time in November, and you guys can work that out, figure out a, a venue.
Yeah, November sounds good.
I think November'd be good, I definitely want some time to advertise it.
Yeah, and we got Halloween coming up.
Right.
We'll have Amber, uh, reach out to the two of you and start the scheduling process.
Thanks.
That was easy. Uh, we'll go back to Evan for updates on feedbackers.
So the only update that I have this evening is that we continue to get, um, some intermittent, um, complaints about the hotline. Those are being referred to DEP. And that's all I have for this evening.
I just, I, I think it's, it's worth noting, uh, we, we've discussed it online. DEP mandates that, uh, feedbackers run that hotline. Uh, so if the hotline is down, that's an infraction, and people should be reporting that to DEP so it can be noted and logged and gathered with all the other data. It is, it is still a big concern, um, it's something that should not be happening. So, please continue to do what you're doing, um, with both reporting the, any orders to the hotline, um, and reporting any hotline issues to the, uh, to the DEP. If you have any questions, I guess, about, uh, the email address or anything like that, you could, you could reach out to, uh, the TA's office and they can provide you with that.
It's also on our, our website.
Okay, and it's on the website, so. Okay, um, Ms. Foley, I believe you're gonna do the trustees of soldiers and sailors?
Oh, is no one there from the committee?
Bob, Bob is here, we can turn it over to him, sorry.
We'll invite Mr. DeToma up.
Can we turn it over to him? I'm just gonna run it from over here, Andy, if you don't mind.
Good evening.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome. Bob DeToma, I'm the Vice Chair of the Trustees of Soldiers and Sailors Memorials. The trustees are pleased to announce two dedication ceremonies to be held on Saturday, November second. The first event is the dedication of the new flagpoles at the old cemetery just across the street. One flagpole will display the Stars and Stripes, and the second will display the flag of the Hassan Mesut tribe. The second event will dedicate the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Plaque, which will be located in Memorial Hall, just outside the Grafton Senior Center. The flagpoles will begin dedication at nine AM and then we'll proceed to the Municipal Center for the dedication of the Vietnam plaque, that'll be approximately nine thirty. And we welcome all members of the public, dignitaries and veterans and their families. Questions can be emailed to the trustees using our address, which is veteransadvisory@grafton-ma.gov. And in addition, the Veterans Advisory Committee will host a Salute to Veterans Comedy Night on Friday, November seventh, at the Delisle Gulay Legion Post. Featuring J.J. Jones, who will host the event. featuring J.J. Jones, who will host the event. And the headliner for the evening is Frank Scarfo, a veteran himself. The doors will open at 6:00, and the show is scheduled to begin at 7:00 p.m. This will be a family-friendly show. Admission is free. The venue features a cash bar, and light refreshments will be available. Questions? It's past my bedtime, I'm sorry.
It's my bedtime too. When is that ceremony?
On Saturday, November 2nd. And we'll send out email invitations. Okay. Thank you.
Keep you up a little longer. The Veterans Plaque is here, as we've noted. But I was with Paul Canoyer from Highway, and another gentleman from Highway, and they're scoping out how to install it, so I think we're gonna try for tomorrow to get it installed, so. It's quite an undertaking, it's very heavy. And it has some serious anchor bolts, so.
I trust Paul implicitly.
Sure, so. No, they've got it under control, but it is, it is quite a formidable piece of bronze, so. That'll be, but it's gonna be beautiful in there.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Alamo?
What time?
For the plaques?
Yeah, November Saturday, November 2.
Flagpole starts at 9:00 a.m., and the Vietnam plaque is scheduled for 9:30.
Mr. DeToma?
Okay.
Do you want to mention quickly why we're updating the Vietnam plaque?
Because our member, Andy Zellberg, discovered a number of citizens who were not on the original. So through his exhaustive efforts and diligent fact-finding, he discovered the names, and that's where we are now with the additional plaque.
Yeah, it's very, very good.
Yeah, and as I understand it, it took some time to find somebody who, manufacturer who'd be able to match the existing plaques that are up there, so that it fits in, and it's.
And the manufacturer was just outstanding as far as their involvement and basically gave us anything we asked for, so.
Couple, couple long projects coming to completion. Ms. Foley?
Yeah, Bob, just to clarify, so the Sampson Square is that day as well, right?
Yep, thank you for asking. We, that was listed on the agenda, but we realized that St. Phillips is having their annual fair that same day, and we discovered that we probably wouldn't have any parking at all. So we're gonna come back with another date for the Sampson Square dedication.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anybody, any other board members? Questions, comments from Mr. DeToma? Nothing?
Okay.
Enjoy your night, Bob. Thanks for coming.
Have a great night.
Good night, Bob.
Okay, Select Board reports. Ms. Foley?
Hi, I did attend the Trustees of Soldiers and Sailors Memorial Meeting, where we discussed just what Bob was going through. And additionally, that committee is working on a plaque for Jim Gallagher, and then Civil War marker project as well. And yeah, I think that's it. And then the Sampson Square will be, we were gonna do that all in one day, but I guess now we'll be doing that dedication on a different day. I attended the Water District meeting on the morning of, I think it was the 9th, where the Commissioners discussed, you know, just some lapses in marketing might not be the right word, but, you know, getting information out and how they were going to proceed to rectify that or make that better. So they've engaged with a, I guess, a marketing company to try to assist with some of that, including a mailing, work on their website, updating website, and other efforts to try to get information out to residents in a more timely manner. They discussed that, you know, obviously this was a a little bit of a perfect storm in terms of a few things that happened, including water main breaks in addition to the whole PFAS mitigation project, so you know, they were a little bit behind the eight ball, but they are, they certainly indicated that, you know, looking forward, they're gonna try to rectify that. And they talked about a water ban that was gonna start immediately. They voted on it that day, just because in part because they're gonna be doing another pilot study, and so hopefully that will help with people using less water. And additionally, they're going to discharge the water from the next pilot study into waste, instead of back into the system. And then I went to Chief Minardi's swearing-in ceremony, along with a couple of you guys, and it was great to see so many law enforcement people there, in addition to, you know, civilians, and just want to thank Chief Minardi for making this seamless transition into his new role.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Same, that was a nice ceremony. It was nice to hear from you as well, Evan. And it's great to see him, Chief Minardi. Talk about his, you know, all the officers in Grafton in such a respectful and humble way, and also just it was really wonderful to see him and his family there, too. And just hear a tough guy get a little bit choked up about stuff. That's a really wonderful thing to see. So, it was nice.
Agreed. Mr. Roffin?
Yeah, just a couple things. So Andy and you and I both went to the Chief's retirement party, so definitely wish him well. It was a great, great celebration of Chief Crapo. It seemed like everybody was there. Dave and Mike, and even Jim McGovern was there, which is great. Really, yeah, just a great party. So I really appreciated that, and I wish the Chief well in his retirement. I have a feeling he's gonna stay busy. The Affordable Housing Trust met on Thursday. We went through a couple of updates. 1727 Upton, 14 Snow Roads. We talked a little bit about the MBTA housing law. And then we discussed a grant agreement with CPC. So this is the best practice when money gets transferred over from CPC to the Affordable Housing Trust. It's best practice to have a grant agreement in place for that. So we're having some discussions on the language and that kind of, they're getting that drawn up. That's about it for me.
Nice. Yeah, most of mine were mentioned. As Matt mentioned, we got to go to Chief Crapo's retirement party at the Senior Center. Yeah, it was, it was well-attended. State, judicial, town, congressional representatives, his family, the whole department, all of whom spoke with what a pleasure it's been to work with the Chief throughout his time here, and all the important work that they accomplished together, so. Joined Matt and the rest of the board, and thanking the Chief for his two decades of service, and hoping he enjoys his retirement. As Ms. Foley mentioned, I also was able to go to the Water District Commissioners Meeting last Wednesday. Add two things, they said they're having good luck, good success, I should say, with the aggressive hydrant flushing, which typically, typically has been occurring between 8:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. They're gonna continue with that. They've been, they've been good about posting which streets will be flushed and affected on their Facebook page. They also urge residents to continue to report the issues. It helps them locate their problem areas. If they don't hear anything from your area, they assume everything's okay and will focus on other areas instead. As was also mentioned, the swearing-in ceremony for our new Chief of Police. I thought it was, it was also special. This is the first time in 40 years, more than 40 years, that we've promoted from within. And one of the quotes that stuck with me was, he's the person everybody chooses to follow, not because they have to, but because they believe in him. I thought that was great. I thought it really summarized Chief Minardi well. Yeah, it was, it was, it was a great ceremony. It was great to see the department and a ton of other divisions of law enforcement out there to support him. And finally, yesterday was our, the Select Board Administrative Assistant Amber's birthday. Just take a moment to wish Amber a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Amber.
Alright, happy birthday.
TA report, please.
What am I gonna talk about now? Alright, so we culled through a lot of it. I do need to get an update on paving. I mean, I know what we've done, but I haven't gotten one in the last week. So we're gonna focus on these four items for this evening. So one, the Grafton Public Library Kupola Project. The exterior, the actual kupola itself, is complete. Now that all that remains is to fix the plaster in the reading room. So that came out great. William did a great job on that, proctored that whole process. And the kupola looks beautiful, came out really nice. So we'll probably, maybe Thursday, get some drone pictures of that, too, we can put up on the on the Facebook page and stuff.
Yep.
Regional Communication Center, so it's pretty hot and heavy right now, so we're meeting weekly. Sometimes more than once. We have our architect working. We're in the CAD phase, which is basically the initial design phase. So right now, like today, we had a meeting where we talk about what rooms would be where, how many positions, all of those fun things, where the restroom should be located. You know, all kinds of different stuff, so. Nice to see some, some, you know, it's picking up, picking up some speed. 95 North Street, so we continue to revise that plan. We did make some headway with the pavilion in actually met a pavilion person at the Biggie.
Is that a thing?
Well, they do sheds and stuff, but they had a beautiful pavilion, and I was like, that is what we should have. And rather than it being like $160,000 of what they, other people bid, it was, you know, like $25,000, and he's like, I gotta warn you, it's $25,000. I was like, I gotta tell you. You should raise your price now. But, you know, I, I, I think, so we've changed our mindset a little bit on that, and I think we're gonna come up with a really nice design, a nice project for a fraction of the cost of what was spec there. And also, we've been doing, well, Highway has been doing a ton of clearing and trail work out at 95 North Street, so removing invasives and clearing in between the trees that are there, creating the initial pathwork, clearing the field space that's supposed to be there, so. Now they're working on some residual clearing of trees and some chipping. But they've made, I mean, a tremendous amount of progress, so they had actually rented a skid steer with a drum shredder on the front of it, which, if you've never seen it, it's just a giant grinding wheel on the front, and whatever you pointed at, and it gets ground up. That's how it goes. So, but they did some, made really quick work of that. So it's walkable. If you've got any interest, you can go out and take a peek. It came out really nice. Lastly, the children's room opened today.
Yep.
So. Yeah. So we're done with that. For now. So, yeah, no, so that's great. Tom had sent us an email early this morning saying that it was ready to go. They did kind of a soft open, because they're, you know, re-acclimating staff, and they have a new staff in there as well. But yeah, exciting to see that project finally come to fruition or completion, and yeah, glad they were able to open back up.
And it looks great in there. If you haven't been down, I highly recommend it. It's fun for all ages, Andy.
Like, nothing happened.
Nothing.
You cannot walk on the mushrooms. Mushrooms are for sitting.
They're for sitting, yeah. I sit like a good boy, yeah.
Can I say one thing real quick?
You're gonna, now, or you kinda have to?
Well, I mean, you could say no, but I'm probably going to. So the children's room was closed for about a year, and I do want to acknowledge the children's room staff that have been working in a makeshift space for about 13 months, and thank them for their patience. All the staff at the library has been understanding and great through this entire process, but the children's room staff in particular have really done well with a bad situation this entire time.
Great point. Glad I made it.
Yep.
That is all I have for my update this evening.
Awesome. Thank you both. Any correspondence anybody wishes to discuss? Hearing none. We can move into resignations.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Alamo?
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Alan Capewell as an election worker.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffin?
Duffin, aye.
Jefferson, aye. Mr. Roffin?
Roffin, aye.
Motion passes.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Alamo?
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignations of Peter Shea and Carl Parisi from the Council on Aging.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Mr. Duffin?
Duffin, aye.
Jefferson, aye. Mr. Roffin?
Roffin, aye.
Motion passes. We have reached the public comment portion of the night is, okay.
Colleen Roy, 53, Elmwood Street. I had raised my hand earlier during the 1727 Upton Street discussion. And what I heard tonight is, one of the main drivers to, this board wants the developer to come in to answer the two remaining questions, is to facilitate a good working relationship. But this developer has been advised by their council not to come in. So how does continuing to pressure them to do that against the advice of council help build that good working relationship? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Roy. Any hands on Zoom?
You have no hands on Zoom.
Meeting minutes? We have none, so we can motion to adjourn.
Sub moved. Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. No discussion needed. Ms. Foley?
Foley, aye.
Alamo, aye.
Duffin? Jefferson, aye?
Roffin, aye.
We are adjourned.